And welcome to the August 24th, 2020 Legislative Session of the Salisbury City Council. I'd like to welcome everybody for their participation tonight, and I would ask that you please join me now in a moment of silent meditation or prayer. Thank you. Tonight, we were supposed to have a presentation from the Community Cats Coalition, but unfortunately, they had to cancel. So now I'll call for a motion in a second to adopt the legislative agenda.
So moved.
Second. Ms. Jackson. And Mr. Boda. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Mr. Boda?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
Ms. Blake?
Aye.
Mrs. Gregory?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. The vote is five to zero. I want to entertain a motion and a second to adopt the legislative agenda. I'm sorry, the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Boda will give that to, was it Mrs. Blake? Ms. Blake?
No.
I think Michelle.
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 Mrs. Gregory.
It was April.
Oh.
Sorry, I couldn't get the mute button to come up.
Okay, I got you. So it was made by Ms. Boda and seconded by Ms. Jackson. Good evening, Mrs. Nichols.
Good evening, Mr. He, everyone. On the consent agenda tonight, we have two items. We have the August 3rd work session minutes and the August 10th legislative session minute, and that's it.
Thank you. At this time, I'll call the, uh, call the motion. I don't believe we voted on that. So at this time, I'll call the motion. All those in favor, Mr. Boda?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
Ms. Blake?
Aye.
Mrs. Gregory?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. The vote is five to zero. We have three public hearings tonight with charter changes, and we'll do each one individually. And City Administrator Julia Glanz will, an acting mayor, will read the resolution. Ms. Glanz?
Good evening, council. So before you is Charter Amendment Resolution Number 2020-3. A resolution to amend the charter of the city of Salisbury, Maryland by deleting Article 8 SC 8-2, City Clerk qualifications. Whereas the city charter provides the city clerk may be the same person who is the treasurer of the city. And whereas the Director of Finance was established in Resolution 623 and made to be synonymous with the city treasurer. And whereas the city would like to update the city charter to reflect the current staffing of the city. And whereas the Salisbury City Council has conducted, has concluded that it is in the best interest of the city to amend the city charter to remove the section referring to the city clerk as the treasurer.
And I believe we have an amendment to this resolution.
I'd like to make a motion to amend it as read. Or is that the next?
Could you, could you read the, could you read the changes into it now?
Me or mirror? Sorry.
Mr. Boda?
Uh, hold on, I gotta get to that email.
Well, then we'll let Ms. Glanz do it. Ms. Glanz, can you read the, uh, read them in, or would you like me to?
Hello, Mr. He?
Yes.
Um, we need to get a motion and a second first. Um, yes.
Oh.
I said, motion, mere motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2020-3.
Okay, Mr. Boda and Ms. Jackson, second. Or was Ms. Jackson actually made the motion?
Oh, I'll say.
And Ms.
Okay, well, whatever.
Okay. So now we can, I'll call for a motion to amend.
So moved.
Ms. Blake?
Second.
Mr. Boda? Mr. Boda, can you have your notes now?
Uh, hold on, because I'm using my phone for Zoom.
Okay. Who's got their notes besides me? I don't think I can read it.
So on, uh, Resolution, uh, 2020-3, uh, in line 20, we need to strike enacted and in ordained and insert resolved. Line 36, insert council amendments are in red. Uh, line 38, strike enacted and insert resolved. Line 51, strike enacted that and insert resolved by the Salisbury City Council that the title of this resolution shall be deemed a fair summary of the amendments provided for herein for publication and all other purposes. Line 55, insert, and be it further resolved by the Salisbury City Council that this resolution shall take effect 50 days from and after the date of this final passage, and that its provisions shall be implemented on the, um, we don't have a date, but on the blank day of blank 2020, uh, subject to the right of referendum. Uh, the city clerk on behalf of the mayor is hereby directed to proceed with the posting and publication of this resolution and the sending of information concerning the charter amendments provided for herein to the Maryland Department of Legislative Services pursuant to the requirements of the Maryland Annotated Code Local Government Articles Subsection 4-304. Line 63, strike, this resolution shall become effective 50 days after the passage in accordance with the Maryland Annotated Code Local Government Articles Subsection 4-304. Line 69, strike, the resolution was finally passed and signed and approved by the mayor and council of the city of Salisbury on the blank day of blank 2020.
Thank you, Mr. Boda. At this time, um, first, we have any questions on the motion? Uh, Mr. Boda?
Uh, no questions.
Ms. Jackson?
No questions.
Ms. Blake?
No questions.
Mrs. Gregory?
No questions.
Okay, hearing none, I'll call the motion on the amendment. All those in favor of the amendment to Charter Resolution 2020-3, please signify by saying aye. Mr. Boda?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
Ms. Blake?
Aye.
Mrs. Gregory?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The vote on the amendment is five to zero. Well, now, uh, vote on the amended resolution. Any questions or about that? Mr. Boda?
No questions.
Ms. Jackson?
No questions.
Ms. Blake?
No questions.
Mrs. Gregory?
No questions.
I'll now call the motion on the amended resolution. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Mr. Boda?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
Ms. Blake?
Aye.
Mrs. Gregory?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The vote is five to zero. We're now opening the public hearing. Anyone that wishes to speak? Uh, we, I don't see anyone on the screen. Ms. Glanz, do we have anybody?
Uh, I don't, no one's written in the chat if they would like to speak, and we only have two guests with us.
Okay.
So if you, if you'd like to speak on the charter change, just wave your hand or write something in the chat.
All right, if there are no, um, speakers, I will close the public hearing. And the resolution, uh, 2020-3 as amended is passed five to zero. I want to entertain a motion and a second to approve Charter Resolution 20-24.
So moved.
Ms. Blake?
Second.
Mrs. Gregory? Ms. Glanz, will you read the?
That was not me. That was April.
April. I'll have to look up. I apologize.
She's, she's too quicker on the, on the mute button than I am.
All right.
Charter Amendment Resolution Number 2020-4, a resolution to amend the charter of the city of Salisbury, Maryland by removing a deputy city administrator and specifying the chain of command in Article 4 SC 4-1. Whereas the city charter provides that there will be two deputy city administrators for the city of Salisbury, and each deputy city administrator shall be the immediate supervisor of specific departments. And whereas there has only been one deputy city administrator for several years, and whereas the city would like to update the charter to reflect current staffing needs. Whereas under the current structure, one deputy city administrator is the immediate supervisor of Department Heads of Finance, Information Services, Human Resources, Business Development, and the Public Information Officer, and one deputy city administrator is the immediate supervisor of the Department Heads of the Departments of Infrastructure and Development, Build Operations, Water Works, Housing and Community Development, and Procurement. Whereas the city council has concluded that it is in the best interest of the city to amend the city charter to eliminate one deputy city administrator position.
Thank you, Ms. Glanz. Uh, I want to entertain a motion to amend that resolution.
To amend.
Mr. Boda?
Um, second.
Like to make a motion to amend. Second.
Second by Ms. Blake.
Okay. I'd like to, on line 27, strike enacted and ordained and insert resolved. Line 58, insert council amendments are in red. Line 60, strike enacted and insert resolved, and strike, and strike uppercase I and insert lowercase i in the word in. Line 72, insert, and be it further resolved by the Salisbury City Council that the title of this resolution shall be deemed a fair summary of the amendments provided for herein for publication and all other purposes. Line 76, strike enacted, insert resolved by the Salisbury City Council that. Line 77, strike that, insert, this resolution shall take effect 50 days from and after the date of its final passage, and that its provisions shall be implemented on the 13th day of October 2020, subject to the right of referendum. The city clerk on behalf of the mayor is hereby directed to proceed with the posting and publication of this resolution and the sending of information concerning the charter amendments provided for herein to the Maryland Department of Legislative Services pursuant to the requirements of the Maryland Annotated Code Local Government Articles Subsection 4-304. Line 85, strike, this resolution shall become effective 50 days after passage in accordance with the Maryland Annotated Code Local Government Articles Subsection 4-304. Line 91, strike, the resolution was finally passed and signed and approved by the mayor and city council of the city of Salisbury on the blank day of blank 2020.
Thank you, Mr. Boda. Questions on the amendment? Mr. Boda?
No questions.
Ms. Jackson?
No questions.
Ms. Blake?
None.
Mrs. Gregory?
No questions.
Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of the amendment for Resolution Number 2020-4, please signify by saying aye. Mr. Boda?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
Ms. Blake?
Aye.
Gregory?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The amendment is passed five to zero. At this time, I'll open the public hearing on Resolution Number 2020-4. Do we have anyone who wishes to speak, Mrs. Glanz?
If you're interested in speaking, please write in the chat or give us a wave.
Hearing none, I will close the public meeting now, and I will call the vote on Motion Number 20, Resolution 2020-4. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Mr. Boda?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
Ms. Blake?
Aye.
Mrs. Gregory?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The vote is five to zero, and Charter Amendment Resolution Number 20, 20-2020-4 is passed. I'll entertain a motion and a second to approve Charter Amendment Resolution 2020-5.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Jackson, Mr. Boda?
Charter Amendment Resolution Number 2020-5, a resolution to amend the charter of the city of Salisbury, Maryland by amending the requirement for competitive bidding for lease terms beyond three years and restrictions, in exceptions to competitive bidding in Article, um, 16 SC 16-3A6. Whereas Article 16 of the current Salisbury City Charter specifies items of situations that are exempt from the requirement for competitive bidding. And whereas the Salisbury City Council has concluded that it's in the best interest of the city to amend the city charter to amend the requirement for competitive bidding for lease contracts beyond three years for the exemption to competitive bidding, which will allow the city to operate in a more efficient manner.
Thank you, Ms. Glanz. Does, uh, anyone wish to speak on this subject in the public hearing?
I don't see anybody in the chat, Mr. President.
Okay, then, uh, if hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. Now I'll call for the vote now on, to approve Charter Amendment Resolution Number 2020-5. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Mr. Boda?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
Ms. Blake?
Aye.
Mrs. Gregory?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. The vote is five to zero. Charter Amendment Resolution Number 2020-5 is approved. The charter amendment, the three charter amendments will be effective on October 13th, 2020. I want to entertain a motion to approve Resolution 3058.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Blake, this is Gregory. Ms. Glanz?
Resolution Number 3058, a resolution of the city of Salisbury accepting the donation of improved real property located at 300 Delaware Avenue, Salisbury, Maryland from GNI Properties Incorporated. Whereas the donor, GNI Properties Incorporated, desires to donate the improved residential property located at 300 Delaware Avenue, Salisbury, Maryland 2181, which was acquired by deed dated October 28th, 1999 and recorded in Wyomica County, Maryland Land Records in lever MSB number 1713 folio 568. And whereas the city of Salisbury is interested in obtaining foreclosed and/or abandoned properties which create a blighting influence on our neighborhoods so that said properties may be rehabilitated for resale or demolished to make way for new construction. And whereas the city of Salisbury has condemned, has a condemn order on this property. And whereas the approval of the acceptance of this property by the city of Salisbury is contingent upon the demolition and rehabilitation of the existing structure and to make way for future use as determined by the city of Salisbury. And whereas there are outstanding taxes owed on the property, specifically year 2021, in the amount of $233.42 and, uh, for Wyomica County and $242.53 for the city of Salisbury. And whereas the city of Salisbury will utilize the existing Maryland Historic Trust to demolish and grant monies to cover closing costs and demolition or rehabilitation of the structure on the property. And whereas no title search has been performed by the city of Salisbury yet, and the status of the title is unknown at this time.
Questions or comments on the resolution, Mr. Boda?
No questions or comments.
Ms. Jackson?
No questions, but I do have a comment. I really appreciate this being done, and I'm hoping that it is a great success.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Ms. Blake?
Uh, no questions.
Mrs. Gregory?
No questions.
I, I too am grateful to GNI, and, uh, it's the wish of the council as discussed in the work session that we try to rehab this house and get it, uh, so that someone can have a home, uh, over their heads. I'll now call the motion. All those in favor of Resolution Number 3058, please signify by saying aye. Mr. Boda?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
Ms. Blake?
Aye.
Mrs. Gregory?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The vote is five to zero, and Resolution Number 3058 is approved. I want to entertain a motion to approve Resolutions 3059.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Boda? Mrs. Gregory? Ms. Glanz?
Resolution Number 3059, a resolution of the city of Salisbury authorizing the mayor to sign the memorandum of understanding with the Eastern Shore Chapter of International Mountain Biking Association regarding an expansion of the mountain bike path network in the vicinity of the Naylor Mill Forest Conservation Easement and northern section of the rail trail. The Eastern Shore Chapter of the International Mountain Biking Bicycle Association is interested in promoting mountain biking as an outdoor recreation and fitness activity. And whereas the Eastern Shore Chapter of the International Mountain Biking Association desires to develop and maintain safe, sustainable, environmentally sound trails for cyclists of all ability levels in the vicinity of the rail trail and expand the existing trail complex in the Naylor Mill Conservation Easement. And whereas the Eastern Shore Chapter of the International Mountain Biking Bicycle Association and the Department of Infrastructure and Development developed the attached memorandum of understanding that defines the responsibilities of each party regarding trail design and maintenance. And whereas the city seeks to partner with the Eastern Shore Chapter of the International Mountain Bicycle Association to develop trails on city property along the rail trail corridor where safe connections between trail complexes can be provided. And whereas the Eastern Shore Chapter of the International Mountain Bicycle Association will provide semi-annual updates about its mountain biking trails activities to the city through the bicycling and pedestrian committee. And whereas the city desires the Eastern Shore Chapter of the International Mountain Bicycle Association to be act, to be an active precipitant in rail trail development and planning for the future spurs of the rail trail.
Thank you, Ms. Glanz. Any questions from the council? Mr. Boda?
I was hoping she could do it all in one breath, but.
Ms. Jackson?
No questions.
Ms. Blake?
Uh, no questions. It's a very exciting project.
Mrs. Gregory?
No questions.
And, uh, the only comment I would have is that, uh, it's a great project, and it's good that, uh, that we have this association with this group. They've been very straightforward and very helpful. At this time, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of Resolution Number 3059, please signify by saying aye. Mr. Boda?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
Ms. Blake?
Aye.
Mrs. Gregory?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. The vote is five to zero. Resolution Number 3059 is passed. I want to entertain a motion to approve Resolution 3060.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Jackson, Ms. Blake? Ms. Glanz?
Resolution Number 3060, resolution of the city of Salisbury making a declaration of official intent regarding reimbursing from proceeds of future borrowing for project expenditures made in connection with three projects identified as ADA ramp, bathroom conversion, field operations, field facility plan phase two, and Ford Exchange River Walk replacement. Where the city of Salisbury, a municipal corporation of the, of the state of Maryland, is in the process of undertaking the three projects identified in Schedule A here to. And whereas the city anticipates borrowing money for the costs of the projects, such borrowing to be evidenced by one or more series of general obligation bonds or other evidences of indebtedness to be issued by the city. And whereas the city reasonably expects to spend city funds on the costs of the projects prior to issuance of the bonds of any interim financing incurred, or any interim financing incurred by the city in anticipation of the bonds, and to reimburse the city from proceeds of the bonds for all or a portion of such previously paid costs of the project, and/or to use bond proceeds to refinance all or a portion of any interim borrowing incurred by the city that is applied to reimburse the city for prior project expenditures. And whereas Section 1-150, 1.150-2 of the U.S. Treasury Regulations provides that government, that local governments funding original expenditures intended to be reimbursed from the proceeds of obligations must make a declaration of official intent in order to qualify such original expenditures or reimbursement from the reimbursement bond, all within the meaning of the reimbursement regulations. And whereas the city is an issuer for the purposes of reimbursement regulations and wishes to adopt this resolution for the purpose of evidencing the clear and official intent of the city to reimburse from reimbursement bond proceeds, uh, original expenditures made in connection with the project.
Thank you. Questions from the council? Mr. Boda?
No questions.
Ms. Jackson?
No questions.
Ms. Blake?
Uh, no questions.
Mrs. Gregory?
No questions.
Hearing none, I'll call the motion to approve Resolution Number 3060. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Mr. Boda?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
Ms. Blake?
Aye.
Mrs. Gregory?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. The vote is five to zero. Resolution Number 3060 is passed. Thank you, Ms. Glanz. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve Ordinance Number 2611 for the second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Boda, Ms. Jackson? Good evening, Mr. Tillman.
Good evening. This is Norton into the city of Salisbury to amend the Salisbury Municipal Code Title 13 Public Services, Chapter 1304, to provide for a waiver of comprehensive connection charges. Whereas Chapter 1302.070 states that the council may allow discounts for the comprehensive connection charges established in this chapter if it is consistent with the city's goals. And whereas the city seeks to encourage development and redevelopment in downtown Salisbury, specifically the central business district and riverfront development area. And whereas the city seeks to partner with developers to improve public amenities such as the Riverwalk, Urban Greenway, bicycle network, and other public spaces. And whereas the EDU incentive area established via Ordinance 2258 is nearing completion. Whereas the Director of Infrastructure and Development Department has discussed the impending completion of the EDU incentive area with the city, council at work sessions on June 1st, June 15th, and July 6th. Now therefore be enacted and ordained by the city of Salisbury that Chapter 1304 of the city of Salisbury Municipal Code be amended as follows. 1304.120 entitled Comprehensive Connection Charge Waiver. Subsection A, a developer may submit written documentation to the Director of Infrastructure and Development to establish eligibility for a project to receive a comprehensive connection charge waiver if the project meets all of the following criteria. One, the project location is within either the central business zoning district or riverfront redevelopment zoning district. business zoning district or riverfront redevelopment zoning district. Two, the project constitutes new development or revitalization of an existing building. Three, the project does not receive a capacity fee waiver for public sponsored or affordable housing. Four, the project complies or will comply with all applicable zoning and building code criteria, stormwater management code and all requirements of the Salisbury Historic District Commission if applicable as confirmed by the Director of Infrastructure and Development. Paragraph five, the project is identified in the envisioned Salisbury master plan adopted via resolution number two six zero zero dated March seventeenth twenty sixteen as amended, where the project meets the objectives identified in the plan. Paragraph six, the project provides a public benefit by constructing bicycle infrastructure sections of the urban green, greenway, riverwalk and or rail trail, public streetscaping elements or public amenities. Or the project exceeds stormwater minimum requirements or the project utilizes sustainable or green building practices. Uh subsection B, if eligible, the developer shall comply with the following requirements and submit the required documentation to the Director of Infrastructure and Development. Paragraph one, written requests for comprehensive connection charge waivers will be submitted to the Director of Infrastructure and Development for review and to make eligibility determination. The written request shall identify the specific eligibility criteria for the project after review and upon favorable recommendation. The Department of Infrastructure and Development shall submit allocation requests for qualified applicants to the mayor for approval. With the mayor's approval, a resolution will be forwarded to the city council for its approval. Paragraph two, the resolution for each property will specify that the comprehensive connection charge waiver is valid for two years with the option to extend the waiver for two one-year terms if approved in writing by the Director of Infrastructure and Development prior to the expiration of the term. The Director of Infrastructure and Development may refuse to grant a request to extension if the Director of Infrastructure and Development finds that the property owner is not making good faith efforts to complete the project. Paragraph three, the two-year waiver begins to run from the time of the signing of the resolution awarding the waiver. And paragraph four, the waiver is assigned to a project and to the property on which the project is located and cannot be transferred by the recipient.
Thank you, Mr. Tillman. Uh, questions or comments from the council, Mr. Boda?
Uh, no, no questions or comments.
Ms. Jackson?
No questions and comments.
Thank you. Ms. Blake?
None.
Thank you. This is Gregory.
No questions or comments.
Thank you. I'll call the motion now, all those in favor of ordinance number two six one one for the second reading, please signify by saying aye, Mr. Boda?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
Ms. Blake?
Aye.
This is Gregory.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, the vote is five zero. Ordinance number six, two six one one is now passed. I'll detain a motion to approve ordinance number two six one two for the second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Jackson? Mr. Boda? Mr. Tillman?
Uh, this is Norton into the city of Salisbury to amend Title one general provisions of the Salisbury Municipal Code to add a new chapter to establish procedures for electronic participation. Whereas the ongoing application administration and enforcement of Title one general provisions of the Salisbury Municipal Code demonstrates the need for periodic review and evaluation and amendments that will keep Title one current, whereas the recent pandemic has increased the need for electronic participation in meetings for the city council and the various boards of the city. And whereas the mayor and city council desire to establish procedures for electronic participation in meetings to be held by the city, now therefore be it enacted and ordained by the city of Salisbury. The Chapter one point two zero electronic participation be added to the city of Salisbury Municipal Code as follows. It's entitled Chapter one point two zero Electronic Participation. Section one point two oh point oh one oh teleconference or other electronic participation in meetings. Subsection A reads, this section governs the telephonic and other electronic participation of the mayor, city staff, the public and members of the council or other board at or other board at all meetings of the city council and other boards of the city unless prohibited by state law. Subparagraph B, the preferred procedure for the city council and other board meetings is that the council and other board members should be physically present at the designated time and location within the city for the meeting. However, physical presence is hereby waived and the mayor, city staff, the public and any members of the council or a board may participate in a meeting by teleconference or other approved electronic means subject to the procedures and limitations provided in this section. Subsection C, a person persist, participating by tele, teleconference shall, while on the teleconference, be deemed to be president of the meeting for all purposes. Person shall make every effort to participate in the entire meeting. Subsection D, if the president of the council or board chair participates by teleconference, the president or chair may vote, but a member acting in the president's or chair's absence who is physically present at the meeting shall preside over and perform all the functions of the president at the meeting. In the event all council members or board members are participating by teleconference, the president or chair shall preside over the meeting by teleconference. Subsection E, teleconference is defined as um any approved means utilized for remote participation in a meeting which enables the individual for the duration of the meeting to clearly hear all council or board members and other participants. The city clerk or board secretary and public testimony and to be clearly heard by all participants and the public in attendance. Subsection F, board is defined as any city board or commission. And then subsection one point two oh point oh two oh teleconference procedures, A, any person who does not wish to be physically present for a regularly scheduled meeting shall notify the city clerk or board secretary at least one day prior to the scheduled time for the meeting of his or her request to participate in the meeting by teleconference. B, the city clerk or board secretary shall notify the council or other board of the person's request to participate by teleconference. Subsection C, at the commencement of the meeting, an approved telephonic or other electronic connection will be established with a person or persons intending to participate by teleconference. After an electronic connection is established, the president or other board shall establish that the connection of each individual is sufficient to meet the requirements of this section. If unable to, to establish a sufficient connection, the person seeking to participate by teleconference will not be permitted to participate and shall be considered absent from the meeting. All members of the council or other board shall be permitted to make such inquiries and to call for a vote on the question of quality of any teleconference connection. Only the council members or board members physically present may vote on the quality of a teleconference connection unless all members of the council or board are not physically present. In that case, the city clerk or board secretary with the advice of the ci, city solicitor shall determine whether the teleconference connection is sufficiently clear to satisfy the requirements of this section. If a person participates in a meeting by teleconference without a ruling from the council, the board or the city clerk or board secretary on the clarity of the teleconference connection, the person's participation shall be deemed to be approved in all actions taken by the council or the board with the participation of all such persons are valid. If telephonic participation is interrupted due to poor connectivity that hinders the active participation of any individual, any council or board member may request a brief recess to allow the person to attempt to reestablish a connection. If the person cannot reestablish a ca, ca, clear connection after a recess, the president or other board chair shall call for a vote on whether to terminate the unclear teleconference participation. Prior to the vote, the council or other board members may make such inquiries as necessary to make a decision. If a majority of the council or board votes to terminate a person's teleconference participation, the board will in, the record will indicate such, and the person participating by teleconference shall not be called upon to com, comment further or to vote. The council's or board's determination is final and not subject to appeal. Subsection D, which reads subsections A and B of this section do not apply to special meetings or emergency meetings of the city council or other board. A member or person who requests to participate in a special emergency meeting of the city council or other board must notify the city clerk or board secretary before the time scheduled for the start of the meeting. The clerk or board secretary will notify the council no later than the commencement of the meeting after connection is established with a person or persons requesting to participate by teleconference, a ruling shall be made on the person's participation in the meeting as provided in subsection C of this section. E, the means used for a teleconference meeting of the city council or other board must enable each person appearing by teleconference to clearly hear the council or board members, other participants and public testimony at the meeting as well as to be clearly heard by all council or board members and members of the public in attendance. Subsection F, the city clerk or secretary of any board shall note in the journal of the proceedings, all members and participants appearing by teleconference. G, to the extent practic, uh practicable uh materials to be considered by the council or board shall be made available to the council and board members attending by teleconference.
Thank you, Mr. Tillman. Questions or comments from the council, Mr. Boda?
No questions.
Thank you. Ms. Jackson? You were on mute, couldn't hear you, April.
No questions.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Blake?
Uh, the only question is, is this the second reading of this?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, no, no other questions?
Thank you. This is Gregory.
No questions. I think this is great for accessibility.
Thank you. And the only comment I have is that actually today uh they were working on um council chambers to be able to uh have a Zoom meeting live. And uh I saw what the test, one of the tests, and it was uh very, very impressive and we thank PAC fourteen for doing that. Uh, hopefully we'll have that up and running very, very soon. I'll now call the motion, all those in favor of ordinance number two six one two for the second reading, please signify by saying aye, Mr. Boda?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
Ms. Blake?
Aye.
This is Gregory?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, the vote is five zero. Ordinance number two six one two is now approved. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number two six one three for the second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Blake? Ms. Jackson? Mr. Tillman?
Thank you. This is Norton to the ci, of the city council, the city of Salisbury, Maryland, amending FY twenty twenty-one general fund budget revising positions and authorizing the restructure of the Salisbury Police Department Command Supervisory and Other Position Allocation. Whereas the police department is undertaking a restructure of command and supervisory positions and whereas the restructure is necessary to redistribute the workload and enhance efficiency and quality of public services. And whereas the restructuring will decrease the authorized position count from one police major position to zero police major positions. And whereas the restructuring will decrease authorized position count from seventy-eight police officer positions to seventy-six police officer positions. And whereas the restructure will increase the authorized position count from seven police sergeant positions to eight police sergeant positions. And whereas the Salisbury Police Department will increase the authorized position count from seven police corporal positions to nine police corporal positions. And whereas salary savings realized as a result of the aforementioned changes to position count authorizations will be utilized to fund police officer positions below the rank of corporal. And whereas this change will result in salary savings while not increasing total authorized strength of one hundred and three police officer positions. And whereas seven of the seventy-six police officer positions will remain frozen. And whereas the restructure of the department will result in the following positions. And it will be uh chief of police wa, currently one, new one, assistant chief, currently one, new one. Major currently one uh under the new law, zero. Captains uh two and under the new law, two. Lieutenants six and under the new law, six. Sergeants seven and under the new law, eight. Corporals s, currently seven and under the new law, nine. And police officers currently seventy-eight and under the new ordinance, seventy-six. Whereas the Salisbury Police Department will remain in this new structure for a test period of no less than one year in order to realize if any further adjustments need to be made for improvement. And whereas um SC seventeen dash three states that the council shall set the number of police officers to be employed by the city. And whereas the Department of Finance in connection with the current approved city budget requires the amended restructuring information in order to tie the newly restructured positions to the current budget, which budget sets limits based on the current position allotment within the city of Salisbury Police Department. Now therefore be it ordained that the city council, the city of Salisbury, Maryland hereby authorizes this restructure of the Salisbury Police Department and amend, amends the FY twenty twenty-one budget as outlined above.
Thank you, Mr. Tillman. Questions or comments, Mr. Boda?
No questions or comment.
Thank you. Ms. Jackson?
No questions or comments.
Thank you. Ms. Blake?
None.
Thank you. This is Gregory?
None.
Thank you. The only comment that I have is that uh I think this is a good move because it's going to further enhance the community policing that the chief has uh has chosen to uh to follow. And I think it's good for our citizens. Now I will call the motion, although in in favor of ordinance number two six one three for the second reading, please signify by saying aye, Mr. Boda?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
Ms. Blake?
Aye.
This is Gregory?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. The vote is five to zero. Ordinance number two six one three is now approved. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number two six one four for the first reading.
So moved. Second.
Try that one more time.
So moved.
Second.
That Ms., Ms. Blake?
Yes.
Correct?
Yes.
Ms. Blake made the motion and Mr. Boda seconded. Mr. Tillman?
Thank you. This is Norton to the city of Salisbury to amend the following sections of Title thirteen Public Services of the Salisbury Municipal Code. Chapter thirteen oh one point oh three oh, thirteen point oh two point oh two oh B point three, and then also point seven and point eight. Section thirteen point oh two point oh five oh, thirteen point oh two point oh six oh E, thirteen point oh two point oh seven oh, thirteen point oh two point oh eight oh, and thirteen point oh two point oh nine oh to revise the ho, comprehensive connection charges definition and applications. Whereas the ongoing application administration enforcement of the city of Salisbury Municipal Code demonstrates the need for periodic review, evaluation and amendment, whereas the water and sewer rate study was performed in two thousand and eighteen in which the comprehensive connection charges were evaluated. And whereas the study recommended adopting an equity-based fee instead of a capacity fee and central system line fee. And whereas the equity-based fee is recommended to be called a connection fee and replaces the capacity fee in the central system line fee. And whereas the director of the Department of Infrastructure and Development recommends other modifications to the Comprehensive Connection Charges Code to clarify the intent of the various fees and programs now therefore be enacted and ordained that Chapters thirteen point oh one point oh three oh, thirteen point oh two point oh two B po, B point three and point seven and point eight, thirteen point oh two point oh five oh and thirteen point oh two point oh six oh E, thirteen point oh two point oh seven oh, thirteen point oh two point oh eight oh, and thirteen point oh two point oh nine oh of the city of Salisbury Municipal Code be amended as follows. Under the heading abbreviations and definitions thirteen point oh one point oh three oh, the um connection fee is inserted in place of capacity fee. And it will, it's re, the connection fee is based on the number of EDUs that the come up, cu, that the customer is projected to generate at a total build out of the development project. It is calculated by multiplying the now connection unit fee by the projected EDU value, which is the average daily water for a particular development project. Fee shall be charged for each new connection to the city system regardless of location to pay for um equity in the city's utility systems. And then they're removing the language, the system's growth and expansion projects is outlined in the city's water and sewer CIP. Under uh the next paragraph, uh capacity unit fee is now being called connection unit fee. And the definition uh means intended to pay for capacity in the central system. It is based on the growth and expansion projects as outlined in the city's water and sewer CIP. The fee uh is being removed and wa, it will read uh connection unit fee is a unit rate based on the equity value of the water and sewer systems expressed in dollars per EDU. And the capacity cost language in line forty-four is being removed. And the next, the capital improvement. And the next, the capital improvement plan means a, uh, five-year instead of ten-year plan showing the city's, uh, capital outlay needs for the water treatment plant, water distribution system, wastewater collection system, and wastewater treatment plant, and setting forth a plan for f- for financing those needs. The next is the, um, removal of the language or the definitions of the central system line fee and the removal of the central system line unit fee. And then in the next, uh, language, it will read comprehensive connection charge means the charge to a new customer connecting to the system that includes the connection fee, infrastructure reimbursement fee, and sewer lateral and water meter tap fee, and then the language capacity fee, facility fee, line fee, and sewer connection on line sixty-three is being eliminated. Under line sixty-five, uh, they're, it, they're removing the facility fee, uh, and the facility unit fee, so that's between line sixty-five and seventy-five, all that's being removed. In its place, the language infrastructure reimbursement fee is being added, is based on the number of EDUs that the customer is projected to generate at total build out of the development project, it is calculated by multiplying the infrastructure reimbursement unit fee by the projected EDU value or average daily water for a particular development project. The next, uh, issue being added, line eighty-two, is infrastructure reimbursement unit fee is intended to recover the cost of the system extensions to a service area outside of the central system. These facilities will typically be the backbone of a new service area and may include major water and sewer transmission mains, pumping stations, and water storage tanks. The fee is a unit, uh, rate based on the cost of the system extension expressed in dollars per EDU. The system extension may have, uh, been performed by the city or a private entity. And then next, uh, beginning at line eighty-nine, um, and continuing, uh, let's see, yeah, through line ninety, they're removing the line fee definition. Then at ninety-two, you're adding the sewer lateral, uh, and then the word connection is being removed, and it'll read the sewer lateral and water meter tap fee is intended to cover the cost of tapping the water and sewer mains and providing the lateral service water meter, uh, corporation stop, clean out, and stub out for the, uh, water and sewer connections, and the word user is being pulled out line ninety-four. And then under chapter thirteen point oh two, general provisions, connection to the city's water and sewer mains, they're adding, um, let's see, under thirteen point oh two point oh two oh legislative intent subsection B, the word under, uh, goals, the goal of the comprehensive connection charge are as follows, uh, nu- paragraph three, new or increased water or sewage sewage usage, sewer usage will be charged for equity in the existing system through a connection fee, and eliminating the language, a portion of the cost of the central or core system through a capacity fee. And then paragraph seven is being amended, it, the, it should read, the infrastructure reimbursement fees are to be indexed yearly in order to cover the cost of inflation impacting the cost of past improvements, and the word facility will be removed from line one oh five. Under paragraph eight, the basis of proposed methodology for connection fee is that the value of the service is equal, uh, to all users, and the word capacity is going to be removed from line one oh seven. And then under thirteen point oh two point oh five oh, under responsibilities, paragraph one, um, it's going to read the developer, develop and maintain a policy and procedures handbook, which provides detailed information, procedures, and examples of the comprehensive connection charge, infrastructure, uh, reimbursement, and other, uh, relevant, uh, development policies, and the word developer is being removed in line one fourteen. The next par- paragraph, review and update the city's water and sewer master plan periodically, and then paragraph three will read, uh, provide recommended adjustments for annual variances in the comprehensive connection charge structure in coordination with the director of finance to the office of the mayor and the city council on or before March fifteenth of each year. The proposed comprehensive connection charge structure, if approved, shall become effective on July first of that same year, the specific recommendation at a minimum shall include, and the words, uh, colon, A T are coming out, and then the connection, uh, unit fee based on the value of the utility systems and the capacity of the system, and we're removing the word capacity on line one twenty-one, and removing the ten-year water and sewer capital improvement plan approved by the mayor and city council on lines one twenty-two and one twenty-three. And then the next section there, um, beginning with subparagraph B, uh, is being removed and ending, and that, let's see, that begins on line, uh, one twenty-four and extends through, um, line one thirty-nine. On line forty, the director of finance shall, and we're removing the language, um, let's see, beginning on line one forty-one through, uh, paragraph four, it's kind of a odd numbering system, but they're removing paragraphs one, two, three, and four, beginning on line one forty-one and ending on line one fifty-six, and then it will begin under B, it shall read in, the future shall re- it'll read, the director of finance shall deposit comprehensive connection charges in appropriate special fund to ensure that the fees and all interest accruing to the special fund are designed for improvements reasonably attributable to new or increased growth and are ex- expended to reasonably benefit the new or increased growth. And then under, let's see, thirteen oh two oh six oh, general connection policy, subparagraph E, we are removing the language on, on line one sixty-five and one sixty-six, uh, if a public health emergency exists pursuant to subsection G of this section is being removed. Um, and then under thirteen oh two point oh seven oh, comprehensive connection charge, subparagraph A, overview and general policies, uh, at on line one seventy, the comprehensive connection charge fee, connection fee, infrastructure reimbursement fee, sewer lateral fee, and water meter tap fee. And then we are removing on lines one seventy-one and one seventy-two, the language for specific fees which are capacity fee, facility fee, line fee, and sewer connection. And then down under subparagraph A, the word capacity is being removed and replaced, uh, with the word connection in two places. Subparagraph B, the infrastructure and reimbursement, uh, language is being added in place of the facility fee and the line, uh, so it will read the infrastructure reimbursement fee instead of the facility and the line fee. And, um, under subparagraph C at line one eighty-one, the sewer lateral, uh, is being added, we're removing the word connection, so it'll read the sewer lateral and water meter tap fee is based on the size and installation, uh, complexity of the user's water and or sewer connections. The, then on line one eighty-three, subparagraph two, the connection fee and infrastructure reimbursement fee will replace capacity fee, facility fee, and line fee. Subparagraph three, the words, the, uh, connection unit fee and infrastructure reimbursement unit fee will replace the capacity unit fee and facility unit fee. Under subparagraph four, the infrastructure reimbursement language will replace the, with the, uh, word facility, so it'll read, the infrastructure reimbursement unit fee will be indexed yearly in order to cover the costs of inflation impacting the cost of the past improvements. And then, um, we are down to line one ninety-one, subparagraph five, A and B is being removed in its entirety, and what was number, paragraph number six is being renumbered to be five, what was seven is being renumbered to be six, uh, what was eight is being renumbered, uh, to be seven, and the language, uh, infrastructure reimbursement is going to replace the word capacity in line two fourteen. Nine is being renumbered as eight, uh, ten is being renumbered as nine, eleven is being renumbered as ten, and there we are, um, removing the words capacity, line, central, uh, system line, facility, and sewer connection, water meter tap fees, those words will come out. And then what was paragraph twelve is now becoming paragraph eleven. And, uh, what was thirteen is now becoming paragraph twelve, what was fourteen is becoming thirteen, and under B, connection will replace the word capacity fee on line two fifty-two, and then beginning on two fifty-three, uh, the word connection will again replace capacity, and the new line will read, the connection unit fee shall be based on the value of the utility system, the existing utility system debt, the amount of grant shoes to fund the utility system, and the existing capacity of the utility system. We're re- we're removing the language at two fifty-five, beginning with the word recent and ending with the word rates and the period. Paragraph two, new or increased water end or sewer usage by a property owner shall pay a connection fee adjustment rather than the one-time adjustment capacity fee, that language is coming out. It is intended to recover the capital costs of equity, that word is being added, capacity is being removed in the water and sewer system, that a use, that is used by or reserved for new and increased usage. Paragraph three, beginning on line two sixty-eight, is being removed in its entirety. Paragraph four is being renumbered and called, referred to as paragraph three, the word connection is again replacing the use of the capacity, so it will read, the connection unit fee shall be calculated by determining the depreciated value of the utility system in terms of current costs for replacement. For both water and sewer, the calculation is based on the value of the utility asset minus the credit from outstanding debt or grant funding divided by the system capacity and equivalent dwelling units. And then the language beginning with the word dividing, uh, through, um, the number two fifty in parentheses, period is all being removed, that ends on line two eighty-five. And then, uh, what was paragraph five is now becoming paragraph four, the word connection again replaces capacity fee, so it will read, connection fees may be expressed in multiples and fractions of EDUs for various sized water meters using equivalent meters as defined by the American Water Works Association Manual M one, water rates or some other generally recognized industry standard, the minimum for any property is one EDU. And then beginning on line two ninety, uh, we are removing, uh, paragraphs six, seven, and eight in their entirety, uh, ending with line three oh one, and then beginning on line three oh two, we are renumbering that paragraph so that instead of paragraph nine, it will be paragraph five, the projected, uh, E, and I guess, uh, here I think that we're just, the rest of the changes are just replacing the word, uh, capacity with connection, and that ends on line three twelve. And then on, uh, line three thirteen, paragraph ten is being renumbered to be paragraph six, connection is replacing the word capacity. And beginning on line three nineteen, subsection B, uh, we're again replacing the word capacity with connection. In C, we're, um, adding new language that reads, the resolution for each property will specify that the connection fee waiver is valid for two years with the option to extend the waiver for two one-year terms if approved in writing by the director of infrastructure and development prior to expiration of the term. The director of infrastructure development may refuse to grant a requested extension if the director of infrastructure and development finds that the property owner is not making good faith efforts to complete the project. Subparagraph D, the two-year waiver begins to run from the time of the signing of the resolution awarding the waiver. Subparagraph E, the waiver is assigned to a project and to the property on which the project is located and cannot be transferred by the recipient. And then under, um, beginning on line three thirty-three, entitled, uh, if the, it, what was a facility fee is now going to be called infrastructure reimbursement fee, and then under, um, three thirty-four, infrastructure reimbursement again replaces facility in two lines on, uh, three thirty-four and three thirty-five. The next, uh, change will go down to, um, I think line three fifty-six, the words infrastructure reimbursement again replaces facility. And under paragraph six on three sixty-five, again, infrastructure reimbursement replaces facility, uh, in two places in that paragraph. And then we also are adding, uh, you know, on line three seventy, water or sewer main is being added to that paragraph. Under three seventy-three, uh, again, the word, uh, and infrastructure reimbursement is being inserted in line three seventy-three to replace the words a facility. And then, um, beginning at three seventy-seven, subsection D, uh, one, two, three, four, five, and six are all being eliminated, and subsection, uh, what was E is being replaced, uh, wh- but with letter D, and the word sewer dash lateral is, are being inserted in place of the word connection, uh, and that's occurring in lines four eleven and four twelve. Down a little lower, we're, we're eliminating the word user from line, uh, four fourteen, and adding in line four fifteen, if these services are provided by the city. Under four sixteen, um, the, it's going to read that the cost of this fee will be the actual labor and material costs incurred by the Department of Field Operations to perform the sewer connection or water tap. The fee will be established prior to performing the work, and we're eliminating what was there in line, uh, four eighteen, uh, through four twenty, uh, the words should be proportional to the projected domestic water demands, which will be reflected in the required meter size. And then under, uh, at line four twenty-one, we're eliminating paragraph three, and if four twenty-three, we're renumbering what was paragraph four to be the new paragraph three. Um, under section thirteen point oh two point oh eight oh, uh, we're eliminating, uh, paragraphs A uh, through, uh, the letter E, uh, so that will begin line four thirty through four forty-six, and then the new paragraph which was E is now going to be designated A, and it will read, the property owners with existing water end or sewer service who increase usage of water or sewer shall pay the connection fee adjustment for the additional water and sewer volumes, and the words applicable comprehensive connection charges to include the capacity fee are being eliminated in lines four forty-seven and four forty-eight. What was paragraph F, uh, we're eliminating, uh, the reference to F, it's now going to be B, and we're also eliminating the first, uh, let's see, three in lines and a word that run from four forty-nine to four fifty-two, and the new paragraph B will read, commercial or industrial users requiring large service will be charged for the equivalent number of EDUs used. Under four fifty-four, G, uh, what was G is now becoming C, and it will read, the projected EDU value, the average daily water usage for a particular property owner will be determined initially by the city and a connection instead of capacity fee collected, and either the city or the property owner may request on subsequent, may request on, uh, I think it, well, I, we'll check it later. It says, request on subsequent adjustment based on actual daily water usage as measured and recorded by the water meter. When the project building is fully occupied, the connection capacity fee, uh, may then be adjusted, and, uh, excuse me, the connection is replacing the word capacity fee, uh, may then be adjusted in additions for deductions applied accordingly based on the average of a minimum two consecutive years of water meter billings and other documentation as required by the Department of Infrastructure Development. The word connection is replacing capacity again in line four sixty-one, uh, so that it will read, the connection fee may be increased based on the average of two consecutive years of water meter billing and other documentation. Any reimbursement of the connection instead of capacity fee shall be without interest. And then under four sixty-four, permitted connection fee waiver for single-family dwelling units is being added. And that will read, this section establishes the criteria for the waiver of building permit fees, plan review fees, plumbing fees, mechanical permit fees, and connection fees imposed by the city for construction of new sing- by the city for construction of new single-family detached dwelling units. The single-family parcels shall be recorded as of the date of the passing of this ordinance. Therefore, the water is for infill properties only. Paragraph two, the single-family detached dwelling proposed to be built shall conform to existing single-family detached homes in the neighborhood in which it is to be constructed to meet all required square footage and architectural requirements. Requests for single-family permanent connection fee waivers are submitted to the director of infrastructure and development for review and internal process. Paragraph four, the fee waiver is assigned to a project and to the property on which the project is located and cannot be transferred by the recipient. Paragraph five, the fees waived for the construction of new single-family detached dwellings shall apply only to new homes built for and sold to individuals who will reside in the structures as homeowner, as homeowner occupied dwelling. Home ownership will be confirmed through the records of the Maryland Department of Assessments and Taxation upon sale and closing of the real estate transaction by the homeowner upon demand by the city. The structure shall remain homeowner occupied for a period of not less than five years. Sub-paragraph six, in the event the homeowner ceases to occupy the property or if the property is sold and no longer remains a homeowner occupied structure prior to the end of the five-year period, waived permit fees, utility fees, and other waived fees shall be due and payable to the city. Paragraph seven, the fees waived as part of this program shall be a lien against the real property in question and shall be recorded, charged, and collected as real property taxes owed upon a property on which there is a structure that ceased to be utilized as an owner occupied, homeowner occupied structure during the five-year period. A notice of lien shall be recorded with the city's finance department and also in the Maryland Liam Records of Wycomico County if desired by the city, detailing the types and amounts of fees that were waived in connection with the design permitting and construction process for each single-family home covered by the program described in this resolution. A copy of the notice of the lien shall also be provided to the homeowner. Administrative fee of five hundred dollars shall also be collected if a structure ceases to be utilized as a homeowner occupied structure during the five-year period referenced above. Fees to be recovered pursuant to lien will decline by twenty percent for each full year that the property remains homeowner occupied. The administrative fee will not decline pursuant to this five-year schedule. And then under thirteen oh two point oh nine oh, extension reimbursement policy. Sub-paragraph A, one, the words, infrastructure reimbursement are replacing facility. Under paragraph three, the, again, the words, infrastructure reimbursement are replacing the word facility. And then under sub-paragraph B, beginning at line five fifteen, reimbursement procedures, one, the director of finance, through the collection of the infrastructure reimbursement fee, instead of the word facility fee, will reimburse the property owner who installed the water and sewer infrastructure as new users connect to the property owner constructed system as certified by the director of infrastructure development. Paragraph two, the director of finance will reimburse the developer within forty-five calendar days of collecting the infrastructure reimbursement instead of the word facility fee from the new users. And then paragraph three, the director of infrastructure development, instead of finance, shall charge an appropriate administrative fee for recording and to recover any handling charges and/or payment processing costs. The administrative fee shall be deducted from the reimbursement amount. Under paragraph four, sub-paragraph four, the director of infrastructure development replaces the word finance. Paragraph five, again, infrastructure and development replaces the word public works. And at the end of that paragraph, beginning at line five thirty-two, they're adding documentation of costs shall be provided within six months after projects' acceptance by the city or else the property owner shall forfeit the right to collect the infrastructure reimbursement. And then under the sunset clause provisions, there's just, it looks like there's a change here in paragraph two, the ten-year optional period shall be subject to city council approval. And that, the word council is being added. And then down below, there's, all that is, is just explaining what all the brackets in bold language mean, but I think we're done. Jack? Jack, I'm sorry, you're muted, Jack.
There it is, I got it, it wouldn't go off.
See, Angela's gone on vacation.
Indeed, after that, after that reading, yes.
I did go on vacation.
I almost passed out.
I know it.
I drank three glasses of water for you, so.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments from the council, Mr. Boda?
No questions or comments.
Ms. Jackson?
After that great read, no.
Ms. Blake?
Absolutely not.
Mrs. Gregory?
None for me.
The only comment I, I want to make is, I want to thank Amanda Pollak for the tremendous job she did on this. This was no easy task. And Amanda, would you like to say anything about this?
I, I was just thinking, the longer it is, the easier it is to pass. No, I'm just joking. No, no, I really, I appreciate all your work. I mean, this went through multiple work sessions because it is a big change, so I, I appreciate you all bearing with us through this change. It's something we've needed to do for a long time, so thank you for that.
Thank you, Mrs. Pollak. All right, I'll now call the motion. All in favor of ordinance number two six one four for the first reading, please signify by saying aye, Mr. Boda?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
Ms. Blake?
Aye.
Mrs. Gregory?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. The vote is five to zero. The first reading of ordinance number two six one four is passed.
Who said that?
Ms. Glance, do we have any requests for public comments and any item on this agenda?
Jack, we still got one more ordinance for the fee ordinance.
Wishful thinking.
It's a short one.
Oh, right, I'm sorry, I apologize.
You're not sorry. You wanted it to be over.
The number, what, Ms. Nichols, what's the number of that ordinance, please?
Twenty-six fifteen.
Twenty-six fifteen?
Uh huh.
Yes.
On my, on my sheet, it says twenty-six fourteen.
Mine too, sorry about that.
Okay, no problem. All right, we do have one more, I apologize. Entertained a motion to approve ordinance number twenty-six fifteen for the first reading.
So moved. Second.
Ms. Jackson, Mr. Boda. Mr. Tillman? Have you recovered?
Yeah, I have. This one is a vacation. All right, this is an ordinance of the city of Salisbury to amend the fee schedule for FY twenty twenty-one, whereas ordinance twenty-five ninety-five sets fees for FY twenty twenty-one. And whereas the ordinance provides for revised structure and nomenclature for the comprehensive connection charges. And whereas the Department of Infrastructure and Development desires to establish revised fees for comprehensive connection charges to align with the new nomenclature and so that they will be collected in FY twenty twenty-one. And whereas Department of Infrastructure and Development recommends the attached revised fee schedule be added to ordinance twenty-five ninety-five, now therefore be enacted and ordained by the city of Salisbury, the fee amounts included in the attached exhibit one, amended FY twenty twenty-one fee schedule shall be adopted by the city of Salisbury and the amount set forth therein shall supersede the corresponding fee amounts prescribed in Salisbury Municipal Code until one or more of the said fees are subsequently amended. And be it further enacted and ordained by the city council, the ordinance shall take effect upon final passage. And the fee schedule attached is really just changing the same names and definitions and amounts that were so carefully itemized in the prior reading. The, the amounts, though, I guess I should focus on the comprehensive connection charge of connection fee for the developer share in the equity of the existing utility system is three thousand seven hundred and ten dollars per equivalent dwelling unit, one thousand nine hundred and twenty-five dollars for water and one thousand seven eighty-five for sewer. And then the, again, reimbursement is replacing the word facility, or, so it will just read the infrastructure reimbursement fee. And down below that, the comprehensive connection charge for infrastructure, there again, we're removing the word facility, the word facility is removed on both sides of that chart. And then the word facility is again removed down below where it says administrative fee assessed on the facility fee for processing, so it will read point one percent of the infrastructure reimbursement fee. The next change is the central system line fee is being eliminated in its entirety, including the amount and the word connection, it would, it would read, the administrative fee for connection fee payment plans is twenty-five dollars instead of the capacity fee payment plans. And that is it.
Thank you, Mr. Tillman. Questions or comments from the council? Mr. Boda?
No questions or comments.
Ms. Jackson?
No questions or comments.
Ms. Blake?
None.
Thank you, Mrs. Gregory?
No questions or comments.
Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number two six one five for the first reading, please signify by saying aye, Mr. Boda?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
Ms. Blake?
Aye.
Mrs. Gregory?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The vote is five zero. The first reading of ordinance number two six one five passes. Now, Ms. Glance, so has anybody requested to speak on any of the items on the agenda tonight?
They have not. If you'd like to say something, please feel free to give a wave or write it in the chat.
Right, hearing none, council comments, Mr. Boda?
Not just, it's good to see a few people today and glad to see that PAC fourteen is getting the work done in the council chambers, so that's going to be a great upgrade. And, you know, just like always say, you know, support your local businesses and everybody stays safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Boda. Ms. Jackson?
I ask everyone to remember to fill out their census forms, get them in expediently. You count, everyone counts.
All right, thank you, Ms. Jackson. Ms. Blake?
I just want to congratulate this, the city on collaborating with our community partners and doing some outreach to several of our targeted and vulnerable areas. There was tremendous success, and that's pretty amazing that we're involved with our community on that level. And just please, if you're healthy, give blood.
Gregory?
Just want to say, please continue to wear your masks over your nose and mouth, please, you know, when you're out in public, use a face covering, use hand sanitizer, and just stay safe.
Thank you. I too would like to encourage everybody to respond to the census. Number one, give blood, number two, and support our local businesses. Thank you very much for everybody who attended tonight, thank you, PAC fourteen. And with that, Ms. Glance, do you have anything, your final comment you'd like to make?
The only thing is, looks like we have a date on that joint census meeting with the county council, it's looking like Thursday six, but I'll send something out official.
Fantastic, thank you. Thank you, everybody, have a great night, and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.